Anything you don't want the whole world to know?
I stole what you versus.
Oh, I leave more.
You got Bill?
We don't have Bill.
Oh, it's on computer.
There's that three minutes tonight. He showed us we pushed a day back.
Wesley, did you make that? Very nice.
It's very nice.
Very nice.
No, I did. I did.
Well, you should both be very proud.
I can take credit for Carl. Tell me when he wants to stand up. There he is. And it's seven. Like to call out the order, please. Start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome, everybody. May we have a roll call, please, Nancy?
Yes. Yellis? Smith? Here. Fox?
Here.
Fleming?
Here.
Rose?
Here.
Cruz is here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. First order of business. Everybody, I assume, has looked at the minutes. And if there's not any questions, I would entertain a motion to approve. A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Those will carry. Uh, we do have some correspondence this evening. It's Mayor Stubblebeam and City Council. Uh, the Knights of Columbus are holding the annual Intellectual Disabilities Fund Drive, Tizzie Roll Drive on September fifteen and sixteen, twenty twenty-three. We are once again requesting the privilege of using the intersection on Main and Fork Streets for solicitation on these dates. We have enjoyed this privilege in the past, and it has greatly aided us in raising funds for the intellectual disabil- disabled in our area. Last year, we donated these funds to Camp Big Sky near Fairview. We thank you for your past help and hope to receive your permission to solicit again. If we receive your permission, we will forward a certificate of insurance for the days requested. If you have any questions, please contact me at my address and phone number listed above. Thanks again for past privileges and this year's consideration. This is Mark Rathman, the Financial Secretary of the Knights of Columbus Council Number twelve zero eight three. Anybody on the council oppose this? We will contact Mr. Rathman and tell him that we are happy to have the Knights back in the intersection. Uh, next order of business I have for this evening are our bills presented for payments. Anybody has any questions, comments, concerns, or we will entertain a motion to pay our bills? Motion by Joe, second by Alex. That is a roll call, please.
Fox?
Yeah.
Fleming?
Yes.
Rose?
Yeah.
Cruzen?
Yeah.
Yellis?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next order is the balance of accounts. If anybody has any questions on those. Uh, we're gonna keep moving. Uh, next order is the TIF report. We had an opening balance of one million twenty thousand two hundred and twenty-four dollars and one cent. We had an interest payments. We made payments to the Economic Development Group and Jacob and Klein, and we collected some property taxes. So ending balance is one million thirty-six thousand five hundred and eighty-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents. Uh, brings us to the police reports. Chief, is that a ballgame? Andy, you wanna add some color here, please?
Gordon's work is continuing. Uh, Officer Carlock. Graduated DTI. He's in FTO right now. Officer DeWester started at the, uh, started duties for the SRO spot at the apartment. Have you seen the SRO car is wrapped? Windows, windshield's getting replaced tomorrow. Once that's done. I'll put lights in tomorrow and it'll be out of the school. Got the speed trailer out about. An issue. But let's get them solved.
Do we have a way to secure that thing so no one drives off with it? No, I haven't. I'm just, just simple yes or no. Okay. Anybody have any questions for Andy? A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Uh, leads us to old business. We do have one item in old business. This is discussion possible action of the Batterton Beer Garden that was before us several weeks ago. Um, I asked Bettina to poll the neighbors. I asked, first I asked Rob to go have conversations with all his neighbors. I asked Bettina to poll the neighbors to see how, because the initial reaction wasn't good. And after Rob's explanation, all of them, I was wondering where this would go. Um, we received a couple of, um, a, a communication from Denise Hans, Denise and Stan Hansard, as well as Shannon Thompson that are really against this. And I've been, I included one of them for you guys, and I got the other one late this morning. So. Oh, you do have both? Okay. So maybe you guys are better than I think that I am. So. And Rob's, Rob's wanting a resolution, either yes or no. So. Uh, both, both residents are, are very against this. And we'll just leave these up here for everybody to read if they'd like. So I was talking to Bill earlier about this, and you know, he says we have, you know, if, if we make a motion and no one seconds it, this thing kind of fades into the sunset. Or we have a motion and a second, doesn't receive enough notes, that's a no or a yes. So I think it's up to you guys, because the way the, the way the application reads is with the discretion of the city council. So I'm, um, leaving this up to you guys how you want to. We can leave it exactly the way it sits right now, and that'll be definitive as well. I'm gonna take the silence as we are gonna stay with the course of action that we did. So, thank you. That's all I have for old business. Leads me to new business. First order is discussion possible action, the CED recommendation, CEDC recommendation, City Council. Um, CEDC met on Thursday, uh, August twenty-fourth. Please find the following recommendations. We did have a residential TIF grant for Gala Carrick for tree removal for eight hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty cents. And we did have a commercial grants, um, facade grant for Diva Florist, tuck pointing on the east side of their building for four thousand dollars. Thank you for consideration. This is the recommendations from the CEDC. I have a motion by Joe, a second by Dave to approve CEDC recommendations. That is a roll call, please.
Fox?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Cruzen?
Yes.
Yellis?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, do you guys know we had the opportunity to buy a bunch of tools and it came on pretty fast? I, I contacted each of you. Here's a picture of the tools that we have. Purchased.
There's a little more than that.
And there's, this is all that would fit in the picture. Most of this stuff is brand new or in very good repair. And I would take a motion to approve the purchase of the public works tools.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Jenny. That's a roll call, please.
Who did you take for first?
Joey.
Joey, okay, thank you.
Sorry.
Fox?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Cruzen?
Yes.
Yellis?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, folks. The guys are really appreciative. Um, last order of business that I have in new business tonight. As you know, we'll be putting a new floor in Jacob's Park Restrooms sometime in September. The facilities are a little rundown as I well. So, um, we got with Brian McVeigh to just talk about what it would replace. And this is, uh, replace three flush valves on three stools and one urinal, replace three toilet seats, replace the sinks in the bathroom with new sinks and faucets, putting lav carriers in walk to support sinks. So he's gonna prop the sinks up so that not all the weight is hanging on them.
They'll be stainless steel.
And, okay, they'll be stainless steel. Total cost of the project is four thousand five hundred twenty-nine dollars and seventy-four cents. This is from Brian. And what this will do is this will, he's gonna replace, a lot of times we get a call that the, the commo's aren't working. He goes up and he bangs on them with a hanger, hammer, and they work. But this will replace all those flush mechanisms and make them work again.
I had a lot of calls this summer of either they were on, they wouldn't shut off.
And while we have everything out, we're gonna go ahead and paint the insides of them. Just make the bathroom stand tall.
I know in the near future, the doors will be replaced. We're gonna do that extra or something. So I've been too long, uh, uh, west out the bottoms. I talked to
Cody.
Cody, Cody about it. So, um, he made us paint them this fall, just to make them look nice.
Gotcha.
We're gonna paint it the gray color that's out there.
We're gonna, we're gonna take the, we'll take, we'll take the palettes out too. So I think Bettina's been working on colors, so. Correct? But if you guys are for this, I'd entertain a motion to approve this money. I have a motion from Joey, a second by Alex, and this is a roll call, please.
Fox?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Cruzen?
Yes.
Yellis?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, leads us to our committee reports. Um, Jenny, you have anything on financial ordinance this evening? Thank you. Joey, on anything further on public safety? Thank you. Nate, anything more on sewer?
Nothing on sewers, but if anybody hasn't been past the cemetery, they've been fencing up and it looks amazing. So can you drive and look at it right now?
Yes. I will second that. Uh, Alex, street sidewalks and garbage. Thank you. Uh, Leslie, parks and rec.
Uh, the new sign, um, trial pal. Did that all by hand, and then I painted it. So that would be put up hopefully in the near future. It's the new sign to replace the old one that we brought in.
I like the color.
There you go. Uh, Chad, what are you gonna say about the spoon and the dry donation? Well, we got a donation from Chad. To the spoon, for the spoon and the dry, uh, for Reed's Park, five hundred dollars to do. So thank you very much. Appreciate that. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Uh, Dave, anything public grounds and buildings related?
We did a walkthrough, um, McVeigh on the iron for the water supply for the MC. Came up with a pretty decent plan, I think to the point where he knows now what it will take to mend it. So I'm looking for possible bid from him, but let us know what it's like. Council, city, what it's gonna cost to make that tied into the MC, etc. And that. Thinking it might come by the next meeting or by next month, something like that. If anybody is interested in whether we're timed in, we'd like to show them. So that's all I have for the.
Nice. Thank you. Now it's time for general comments. Chad, you wanna start?
I'm looking forward to a great year just to drive. So it's not just being for my ladies. Yeah, I'm really excited for some of the drivers here. Um, we've got nine more vendors, plus more spaces available. So I feel like there's less traffic coming between hazards, so it's gonna be a great time. Also, I have a, a, a market. I feel like it's gonna be a lot more organized this year, so. Come on, have us come over. Really excited.
Coordinate through Bettina for anything you need about. I know we bring up the tables and things like that. So.
Garbage cans and, um, I can put anything on our Facebook and website as well.
Yeah. So, so coordinate through Bettina and we'll, we'll figure it out. Thank you. Please, Matt.
I generally walk every morning around through town, no problem. Did my walk on August thirty-first. All the way through town, came back down, burned, turned on South Apple like I always do. I got to the, about a half a block down the end of that first house, right there. And I saw this dog going crazy, which you hear every day, finding the fence there. Uh, I don't know the name of the people, but I got to the end there. Here they go. Somebody let them out, and they came from behind the garage. And I bought his hand. It's a doberman and a big German shepherd. Well, they both came and started kind of from the garage. Luckily, the doberman stopped at this curb. I'm on the other side, on the other side of the sidewalk, coming out, just in the grass. And the shepherd never stopped. So I thought, I can't outrun them. So I just got defensive, just, I found, I put my hand out, and I started hollering at him, moving my hands and everything. He just kept coming. He jumped up. I had a, I had a little cut here, you know, he just bled on. And it was blood all around here. And just as I hit it a couple of times trying to push its face back, somebody from my house, I think it was a lady, called up and called him off. So I thought, okay, good. And they both ran across and went behind the garage and out of sight. So I thought, I'm gonna call the police, but I'm gonna walk down and watch her. So I went down like Jen's, going on the same goal and talked with him, showed him that. These dogs are out a lot more than you think they are. So I'm talking to him. I told the police and said, well, we'll be there a minute. We'll just finish that something right now. We'll be down. So we waited about, oh, it was between five and ten minutes. Next thing I did, there come three dogs out of the same area. They went across the street. So they didn't lock them up. They called them in, but apparently didn't lock them up. So that's when I called the police back. He came down there, and he saw them, all three of them out. And he talked to them, and then he told me he would call the animal control and oh, he checked the tags and he wouldn't check the dates or something like that. So. And so they checked and said, they're paying, they all have the date and everything. Last I heard, they got a fine for each dog, which I don't know what that means. But they, these things gotta stay on the street.
Well, so I
Called them back and still.
That triggers a record, right?
Right.
Yeah, timeframe. Alright, so number one, I'm sorry. Number two, anytime you see dogs loose, and this is anybody, please call two four five two four two six. Let our officers know where they are, because we, we need help. They can't be everywhere, and we don't want dogs. We have, we have ordinances about dogs running at large. We've turned all this over to animal control because they have more rights than me. And they, they actually do follow through. Um, when we were doing it, I mean, there's still dog in town that we deemed as vicious and still here because it's in, it's in court proceedings. Um, that dog will probably die before they ever issue away an order. But, but I encourage everybody to call two four five two four two six anytime. And if John sees them out, then John needs to call, because we don't want dogs running at large anywhere in town. They're dangerous. They could, it could be as much as a little kid. Or if they'd have knocked you down, Vince, who knows what would have happened? So.
I'm thinking about those kids that's on that same corner getting on a bus every day. Kid daughter, granddaughter, great-granddaughter, they, they used to walk that way every day, come over every Monday, I don't know. I was just lucky that they, I don't know what would happen if they, she hadn't called them off.
Well.
I was worried about that because it was the doberman that then continued to this state over there and was kind of growling and messing around on the other side of the street. So that's scary. So I thought, personally, something's gotta be done with those dogs so that they don't get on the street again.
No. And if, if you see them again, please call. Tell everybody you know to call two four five two four two six. That, that rings directly to the officer on duty. Um, and we need help, because if we see them, we can do something about it. If we can't, then if we don't see them and nobody tells us, we can't do anything about it. Or you can always call Fulton County Animal Patrol, you're animal control as well. And I don't know that number, but we'll get it, and Bettina will post it on her page.
We also, we have a non-licenced company.
Everybody, all the dogs have to be, you know, they've got to have their rabies shots. And we do have a dog license that have to be registered with the city, and that's every year. So.
Do you get back from animal control? They saw animal control, but in that house. I wonder if we're talking.
They, they was policeman said they were supposed to call me back. I didn't hear anything, and about a half an hour later, I called him to find out. He said they had called him and said that they were up to date on their shots and everything.
Right, but you should probably still call them. I'd say that someone was having it and had cancer, just jumped on a man walking and ripped his coat, and I had to, I had my animals deemed vicious. And there are all sorts of rules and things. But I mean, it wasn't a lie, or.
And, and animal control has more, more teeth, if you will, pardon the pun. But they, they can, they can seize the dogs if it becomes habitual.
I just wanted to find out what they did. All I heard was they, they were given a fine for all three dogs. And I just wanted, I didn't know what that meant.
They were, they were state cited. They were given a state citation. What that fine is, I don't know.
Does that mean they get a second offense?
But, but it, it also starts that, alright, dog at large. So then if you catch them again, the fine probably doubles. I don't know. I don't wanna speak for the state. I don't wanna be the state. Yeah, they'll be able to tell you, and, and then at, at a certain point, it becomes nuisance. And then, and, and like I said, we were trying to handle these internal events, and it just turned out that, you know, we might as well have just said, okay, go on about your business. And so that's when we've, we've, I don't know, if we contract, did we contract with them? Or did we just turn all of our dog stuff over? The, the county provides it, so we've, we're now utilizing the county to do this.
And when you deal with that, you're dealing with the department of that, and they really don't wanna butt heads with them. So that's why they get, like you said, they got more teeth to mess with.
Yeah. I mean, I hate, it, it's a bad pun, but they, they can actually help us, and they, they can do things more than the city can. But, but I implore everybody that if you see a dog out, and especially if it's habitual, call our officers and they will help animal control and tell them what they've seen. And, you know, the, the only way we're gonna be able to stop this is if everybody helps us. So.
So you guys have the least of all ordinance. Did the cops also have given the ticket and the animal control give the ticket?
You can't fix the state in a city ordinance.
It, it probably means more coming from the animal control.
So just like one offense now, I mean, nothing, nothing happens?
Well, but it's, but it starts a
I mean, literally, like, I won't even walk around my dad's house unless I go later down and around because
Carry a stick.
Now, it's over. There's nothing you can do to protect the baby.
I have been out of the fight since you've seen all of them.
Eddie says that.
And I live two blocks from them. I know he is.
I don't either.
I know the postal people, what, got the carrier. She, she told me today that those dogs, I mean, she's scared to death, two of them. You know, so it's not this citizens of, of our community, it's the postal people too, we need to protect. And she said, one day, the dog, one of the dogs rammed so hard into the window, busted their window because it was wanting to get out to get coat. So that's pretty bad. So.
But here's the problem. Did she call? No.
So that, that's why we need somebody to call every time this happens, because the only way we're gonna do it is to create a history.
You guys need to do a walk down the street and listen to them inside of there, and when they jump up on that seven-foot fence, their heads, their noses above that fence. They're wanting to get out. It ain't that they're just, they got out crazy.
The postal, yeah, she said, if there was a patio furniture frozen up, they would get on that, they'd go over top of that.
Well, so. I, I think that you could call and say, hey, I think these are vicious dogs and that animal control. I, I don't know. I, I can't speak for animal control. I just, I just, I just know that if, when we were involved with it, like I said, if we still have a dog in town that we deem vicious, it's still here. And it, because the courts are involved. And, and animal control has way more control over the city, and I, I, be a thorn, is all I can say.
I'll get you a number, Vince. My phone was over here. I'll answer. Any other questions? And I'll get that to you.
Yeah, Beeman's real super good, dude. He's been done it for years.
He's part of the shares department.
But I'll, I'll get the number, the number here. My phone locked outside.
Yes, Gordon.
What's the legal procedure for using a taser on an animal like that for a club?
Or gun?
You can't, you can't, can't fire a gun in city limits.
Take that, be brave.
spray, she's further.
Do you have a valid FOI card? Have you been trained? You're not gonna shoot it off. That's, that's firing a gun off into soup.
I would do it, and I don't feel like I should have to do it. That's not the point though. I, you know, and even like mace. I mean, I would be up, more up to the walks, because it's not gonna blow back in my face. I'm spraying, um, mace at a dog, it'll blow back in my nine- to the granddaddy's face, and that's, you know, I don't want this to hurt.
Have you sprayed much mace?
No.
Okay, it's gonna take real hard wind to blow it right back in your face.
And there's
I just feel like, do we have to carry a baseball bat?
I'll give you some. I got extra game.
I mean, you should, um, some job leads also have their color in use in its league, yeah.
In Harps.
And it, it doesn't blow in the wind. It's very heavy and it's strong.
I think our main important part here is that you have to go and keep following up. You see them out again, you have to call. It makes a record. That it's not just, this is the first time that this has been reported. So they only are in strike one, right? So you keep calling and saying, hey, they're out again. They're vicious. Somebody needs to come deal with it. And they're strike two. And then this third time, and eventually that's ultimately what comes down here. We have to call it when you're
Unfortunately.
It's, I don't really know.
And it's not a good
The procedures. Well, I think that I can, even if they're But they can tell us. Because it's state important. It's like a state violation. But I can tell you.
You know, you know, as all know, I, I delivered papers since I was, what, eleven? Got chased by a lot of dogs in that say block, and I used to carry a ball bat. And those dogs wouldn't come near me with a ball bat. You know, and it was early, you know, I was in their yard af, you know, and it was still dark out, because I started, when I was younger, I started earlier. As I got older, it really went downhill from there. But, uh, I carried a ball bat with me. But, uh, I carried a ball bat with me for a particular group of dogs that chased me every day. Those dogs didn't come near me when I had that ball bat in my hand. I, I would, I just assumed hit myself and a dog, but I also wasn't gonna get bit. And in your case, you know, I think, you know, I've seen plenty of people carry sticks that keep dogs away, because dogs are afraid of sticks. Val? Jim? Well.
You know, and then I have to sleep at night for worrying about that. My dogs were killed.
Well, and, and you've got control of your dog. However, I heard you got drugged down the cemetery one day, but, um.
Yeah, I'm, I'm over that now.
I heard all about it, but, um, you know, I, I'm sorry that, unfortunately, there are pets and different people treat their animals differently.
Like, you know, we can't, like, you guys get our send a letter to this home or make a phone call to say, hey, we have to be concerned, we're scared of your dogs. And just see kind of what they say, like, oh, they're fine, they never, you have to get police calls and orders saying we have multiple people saying that they're out, they run loose, they growl, the mail lady's scared, I mean, just.
Well, yeah, well, the mail lady will tell us that, but unfortunately, a lot of that's hearsay. And, and we get, and, you know, so I'll talk to Bill and see what we can do. Um, Bill's been on the other side of this with his dog as well, so he knows the ins and outs of both sides. So I will get with Bill and I'll see if, if there's, if we can issue a letter or something to that effect.
I'd be curious, these owners react, if they're like, eh, or if they're like, oh, we have to realize, no, we'll keep it by our eye. I mean, at least they're aware. They kept it by their eye to make sure the gate was shut, it's latched.
I'm hoping that the fine.
If I go and talk to the Monzos, they're pretty decent people.
I think that would be great.
Let's see what's going.
Make sure that.
Like I said, this is the first of I've heard of all this, so. If it didn't happen on mine, I don't.
You have to see if they have a city license. You, you have the ordinance for a reason. See if they're licensed with their, because it is something that they are supposed to have, their dog, for years. I have to do it, so, I mean, everybody else should have to do the same, have a license to, to get the fines.
They want to talk to them.
So, so we'll report back to you, and I'll let, I'll, I'll talk to Bill, Andy will go have a friendly conversation and.
I am a little bit too, I mean, I love dogs, but it's, it's terrifying when they're walking, and even a dog walking, that you experience the crap out of. On a hundred pound shepherd that's growling and bearing a teeth, you know, if I had a baby, I don't even know what I would have done. I mean.
Alls I can say is if you see them out, please call two four five two four two six, and then we'll, we'll see what our other recourse is. Best I can, best I can offer you at this point. Yeah, or nine one one will get you the same way, maybe faster. Well. Thank you, sorry. Well, we'll see where we go from here. Well, you know what? Goes a long ways, so. Need a spare one, I probably got one in the garage. Anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.